I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the name... If it remains standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Dr. Aguilar, do you have any opening comments, sir?
Yes, sir. Board members, a team of students from early college academy placed second in the state at the We the People competition on Friday, January 29 in Baton Rouge. We the People is a speech and debate competition on the American Constitution and governmental policies that is sponsored by the Louisiana Center for Law and Civic Education. It was ECA's first year to compete, and the team is made up of 16 ninth through 12th grade students. Since this competition, the team advisors, Ms. Vicky Abear and Ms. Amanda Guidry, have been contacted to have their team participate in the national competition in Washington, DC on April 22 and 23, 2016. The cost of each student attending is $1,500, and fundraising efforts are underway. If anyone would like to contribute, please contact Principal Ann Castile at ECA. Thank you to the district staff, school-based staff, and the school board members for their participation in the advanced ed accreditation process in February. As reported at the special board meeting on February 17, the external review team is recommending that Lafayette Parish School System continue to receive district accreditation. The final report will be received in four to six weeks. The superintendent's scholarship golf tournament is scheduled for Monday, April 11. The tournament is 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Since 1997, over $400,000 has been raised for scholarships for our students. Anyone interested in sponsoring a team or participating in the event should contact Bobby Bado, Director of Athletics, Health, Physical Education, and Social Studies. Registration forms can be found on our website. Today is Read Across America Day, Dr. Zeus's birthday. Thank you to all the volunteers who went to our schools today to read. The children appreciated it as well as the staff. Did you know that Dr. Zeus wrote "The Cat in the Hat" in response to a national concern that American children were not learning to read? Since the cat first appeared in 1957, he has made learning to read fun for generations of children across the world. So, in the words of Dr. Zeus, and I apologize, we could not find my hat. In the words of Dr. Zeus, "The more that you read, the more things you will know; the more that you learn, the more places you will go." Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Aguilar. I'd like to, at this time, recognize my colleague, Mr. Lachale. Mr. Lachale?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take the moment. We've invited him. I'll put it on the agenda for next week to have the Acadiana High Boys Soccer Team here. I just wanted to give a shout-out to Coach Jan Scott Rishard and our boys from Acadiana. They fell a little short Saturday night in the state championship. They are Division I runner-ups. They were the champions of District III. Just wanted to tell them congratulations and can't wait to see them before the full board next Wednesday night as we recognize them for having a really great season and finishing runner-up in state. Once a Ram, always a Ram.
Thank you, Mr. Lachale. And I noticed, like the Acadiana Junior ROTC, you have your dress blues on this evening. Moving along to... And do we have any additions to our agenda? I would accept a motion to approve the agenda. Mr. Bruceard? And Mr. Lachale, second that we approve the agenda as presented. Any questions or comments from any members of the audience? Any members of the board? If not, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Nine, four, none against.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda is item 2.1, which is a time-sensitive introductory item, approval of architect fees for furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and the design package for the new high school project.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Due to the time-sensitive nature of this item, I move that item 2.1 be moved to the action items list?
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Hidalgo and a second by Mr. Lachale that we move item 2.1 to the action items. This is a unanimous approval is needed for this to move to action. Any questions or comments from any members of the audience? Members of the board? If not, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Nine, four, none against.
Are we going to call that 3.15, Melva? 3.16, huh? All right, then I will read the items we have for action, and I would ask that if any of you want to pull any of these items, please indicate. 3.1, Library Science Specialist Job Description. 3.2, Policy Revision for Section L of the Policy Manual. 3.3, Policy Revision for Section M of the Policy Manual. 3.4, Pupil-Teacher Ratio for 2016-17.
Pull that one, please.
3.5, Elimination of Job Description Titles, Support Teacher Special Education Community Skills Program. 3.6, Vision 2020.
Pull that, please.
3.7, Resolution-03-16-1881, National School Breakfast Week and National Nutrition Month. 3.8, Permission to Grant Utility Servitude to the City of Lafayette for Como High School. 3.9, Approval to Advertise and Accept Bids for the Annual Food and Non-Food Supply Bids for 2016-17. 3.10, Approved RFP, Recommendation RFP Number 12-16 to Grant Evaluation Services. I'm sorry. We want to pull that one completely off the agenda, 3.10, at the request of Billy Guidry. So, 3.10 will be pulled off the agenda. It'll be an introduction item next time. And the very same for 3.11, approved the RFP. Mr. Guidry wishes to pull that one from the agenda. So, 3.10 and 3.12 will be pulled... Oh, 3.10 and 3.11. 3.12, Construction Fund Budget. 3.13, Approval of Budget Revisions at the Capital Project Funds.
Pull that, please.
3.13. Yeah, that was 13. 3.14, Approval of Bid for Carncro High School Waterproofing. 3.15, General Fund Budget Revision, Academic Auditor. And then 3.16 would be the architect fees for the new high school.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Could we go back? Could you pull 3.1?
Sure. Library Science Specialist Job Description. Mr. Bruceard?
Mr. President, I move that we approve all action items with the exception of those pulled.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Centeni, second by Ms. Morrison, that we adopt all of the items other than the ones pulled. Any questions or any comments from any members of the audience? Any members of the board? If not, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Nine, four, none against.
All right, motion carries. We will move on then and open discussion on those items that have been pulled, and we will start with 3.1, Library Science Specialist Job Description. Mr. Bruceard?
Yes, thank you. It's a lot of... Why are we changing the description? Are we adding to the duties they're doing, or is it a new employee that we're looking? It's a new position that we're trying to put into place?
Can I ask... Mr. Bruceard, can I ask you to introduce a motion, pro or con, doesn't matter? Okay, yeah. After the motion is made and seconded, we will discuss.
I'll second it.
Ms. Morris, second the motion. Go ahead, Mr. Bruce. I'm sorry.
So, again, the... This job description, is that something new or added duties to that job? Or why are we approving something, or why are we changing the job description?
President Angel, Dr. Aguilar, and board members, Mr. Bruceard. There are two or three things we're trying to accomplish, and you're going to see a regular stream of job descriptions coming to you. One is that we would like to get them updated into our current format. So, the vast majority of the changes you see highlighted in yellow on the job description, mostly the financial responsibilities, competencies, additional language skills, math skills, reasoning, computer, physical demands, work environment. We're also working to get our job descriptions compliant with OSHA and the ADA. The job description should have those characteristics in there about work environment and safety. The only changes to the job description are that the position now reports to the chief executive or the chief academic officer. And then if you look down in Essential Duties and Responsibilities, advises school principals and librarians on state evaluations and portfolios. Those are the only changes to the... Material changes to the job description, to make sure we include a duty that requires the specialist to communicate with principals about things that are important to the libraries. And if Ms. Samick has any comments, she's certainly free to make them.
Now, Mr. Bruceard, actually, Mr. Leininger explained it extremely well. It's just making sure that we're in alignment with current responsibilities.
So, we were not exactly in compliance before?
Just the verbiage on some things. Considerable knowledge we change to possess is a thorough knowledge. I mean, it's just really wording.
And there were some items down in the... Down toward the end, about ADA compliant, where some job descriptions were faulty on some of those requirements. A person can't lift a certain weight or do certain things, you need to describe those things so that if you need to make an accommodation, you know what the accommodation needs to be for.
Job description, the same person that was in it before, or is something new?
It will be something new because the current incumbent is retiring.
Ms. Morris?
So, Mr. Leininger, it's not a new position. It's just a revamped job description.
That is correct.
Any other questions or comments? If not, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Nine, four, none against.
Okay, motion carries. Moving along, we will now act on item 3.4, which is Teacher-Pupil Ratio. Mr. Hidalgo, you had asked to pull that one. You want to make a motion?
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm going to pull it up. I move that the board postpone the proposed pupil-teacher ratios for 2016-2017.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
And Mr. Centeni seconds the motion that we, in fact, postpone acting on the pupil-teacher ratio for 16-17 school year. Do we have any questions or comments from any members of the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Might I make a...
His motion didn't have a...
Might I make a request of Mr. Hidalgo?
Sure.
Would you mind adding to your motion until such time as staff produces a report detailing student-teacher distribution among all of our schools?
What he just said.
Produces a report detailing student and teacher distribution across all schools.
Suggested that staff produces a report detailing distribution...
Of students and teachers across all schools. Not that that gives you much clarification of when, but...
Well, I wanted some clarification on exactly what you mean.
We'll talk about it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll open up the floor for discussion for members of the board. Mr. Hidalgo?
Right. That's not necessarily my question, although I'd like an answer to it. I'm looking at the last column on the document that was provided, and we... You and I discussed this already. The two extra students section plus one student gets an additional teacher. Currently, it's one extra student plus one. So, for example, if you have four third-grade sections and eight students, new students, go to the school, they distribute those students evenly over the four sections. So, that would effectively increase the pupil-teacher ratio from, in this case, 24 to 1 to 26 to 1. And another teacher wouldn't be brought in until one more additional student, so the ninth... Until the ninth student moves in. Am I understanding that correctly?
Are you asking me a question? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, that is true, except for the limited number of instances where you're going to have exactly 24 to 1 distributed across all the schools. There are a variety of reasons that the 2 plus 1 ratio is proposed, and if you might be patient, I'll give you an example.
Yes, sir.
I'll discuss with the board and illustrate to the board what we discussed yesterday, and actually... Or what you and I discussed the other day, and actually, there was one small point that we did not cover that I will illustrate. If you take a fifth grade in a school that we currently have, that fifth grade ratio is 29 to 1. There are currently 137 students in that fifth grade, five sections. That is a student-teacher ratio or pupil-teacher ratio of 27.4 to 1. So, that is below the 29 to 1. So, let's just say that the enrollment in that school goes up to 148, which is 2 plus 1 for five sections. At that... On that basis, if you kept the five teachers, the ratio would be 29.6 students to each classroom, which was .6 students above the pupil-teacher ratio. Now, we come up with something that we think is fair, because if you add 10 students or 11 students, that's more than a third of a classroom, and we think that that creates a burden that is unreasonable. So, on that basis, if you add the six teacher, which you would do, because you would prove enrollment, you'd look at the rosters, and we've done that numerous times, your ratio would become 24.67, which is four and a half below the pupil-teacher ratio. Now, if you went to 1 plus 1, as suggested, and it's a good idea, but this is something that we missed the other day, with 137 students at five teachers, your pupil-teacher ratio is 27.4. Correct? Okay. If you add six students, you go to 143 students. If you divide 143 by 5, your pupil-teacher ratio is 28.6, which is still below the number. So, the reason we picked 2 plus 1 is we think it's, one, a more reasonable and prudent way to manage our assets, and, two, if we do go above a certain number, we think that by adding two students per classroom would require us to go to another level of teaching or another level of teachers. So, the reason we do the 2 plus 1 is because it's a more prudent way to manage our assets and allocate our funds.
Okay, well, what I gathered from you when we spoke before, in addition to the explanation tonight, I would assume that the answer is yes. My concern is, as I stated, in that case where you have four sections at capacity, 24 to 1, eight more students move in, now you're 26 to 1 effectively across the board, and you don't get another teacher until another student moves in, if another student moves in. That leads me to my second question. How many exceptions were granted this school year for additional teachers since the pupil-teacher ratio was set and since the school year started?
Okay, when we proposed the ratios that you adopted last year, we had projected that we might grant maybe 15 to 16 appeals, which is where, gee, I'm anticipating enrollment, and because I can anticipate that enrollment and justify it, I'm close, like in Mr. Hidalgo's example, then we reserve some appeals for that purpose, which makes good sense. We don't want to create an undue burden. On the other hand, we need to be prudent with our money. So, on that basis, when we did all this, a lot of teachers or a lot of principals came to the interim superintendent and said, "Listen, I'm close." And we granted another... We granted almost 40 appeals, 37 and a half appeals. Now, there was a lot of discussion about the fact that enrollment would go up, but what was not comprehended in that deliberation of appeals was we had three charter schools, and we had estimated that our enrollment would drop by about 1,000 because of the ZIP code analysis that Mr. Guidry and the Human Resources Department and the Academic Department did. And in October, the enrollment was actually down about 1,000. So, by granting all of those appeals for enrollment that never occurred, we had almost 40 teachers over budget based upon the pupil-teacher ratio. That's approaching $4 million.
Let me interrupt you. You had 40 total, or you had... How many of the 40 today didn't really... Still haven't met the requirement but have an additional teacher?
Well, based on the analysis that we've done, we would... Based upon the 2 plus 1 ratio, it would be the 40 plus about another 20 teachers that we would cut based upon that analysis of going to 2 plus 1.
No, 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 no. If we granted 40 exceptions this school year, how many of the 40 would not have been granted had we waited until they met the requirement? As opposed to, "Well, I feel like I'm going to meet it. I might meet it. It looks like I'm going to meet it."
Well, if you take the fact that we were over 1,000 students, and you take an average of 25 students per classroom, because most of the appeals were granted in the elementary and middle schools, that's 40 divided by 25 students, or 1,000 divided by 25 students is 40 teachers, which comes dramatically close to the 37 and a half appeals that were granted.
And you said $4 million bucks?
That's correct. $67,000 budgeted... We're budgeting this year per teacher.
That's a concern. I mean, you know, we're trying to keep pupil-teacher ratios down. We had to go up last year. we're trying to keep pupil/teacher ratios down. We had to go up last year. I feel like we had no choice. The board agreed, that's why they voted that way, and it was implemented. But we're granting exceptions all over the place. Most or at least some exceptions that they still haven't met the requirements. And then now what we want to do is we want to potentially, look, it's going to affect my district, I believe, the most. People are flooding in, District Nine. So you're going to have people moving in, moving in, moving into the schools. You're going to have, in this case, in the scenario I gave, you may have four sections of third-grade teachers that have twenty-six to one. I, you know, I disagree with it.
Well, when you get to that, you'll get another teacher and your ratio will go down.
No, no, you won't. Not if you stay at twenty-six to one, because you need nine students, not eight. What if it's seven students? Three of the four have, are twenty-six to one.
So at the, if it's the pleasure of the board to change the ratio because you have to approve it, then you're going to have to make that expenditure to cover it.
I realize that. Thank you.
Well, go ahead.
Dr. Morris?
Mr. Leininger. Mr. Hidalgo mentioned at the very beginning of his questioning that last year, or for the current year, fifteen, sixteen, it was one extra per section plus one. Is that right?
That's what we start at the budgeting at. That's correct.
Okay. So this is a change, then, to increase it to two extra plus one?
Well, actually, it's been the practice of the school system for as long as I know that after September first, we've gone to a two-plus-one ratio.
What did this board adopt when we adopted the ratio last year? What did it say?
Well, it was one plus one.
Okay. My concern with this is that, at the top of this, it says the staffing ratios are remaining the same, but they're actually changing under this proposal. So just like on the job description that we talked about previously, where you highlighted in yellow the changes, I think it's important to do that in situations like this as well, so that everyone knows what exactly has been changed from what we did last year, in the interest of full disclosure to us and to the public. So I would just request that when these kinds of changes, especially on something as critical as our teacher-student ratios are being discussed, that we make every effort to make sure that every tiny little detail is, any change is being fully disclosed to everybody. Thank you.
Well, that's my error, and I apologize for it.
Sure.
But yeah, that won't happen again.
Mr. Centini?
Mr. Leininger, a quick thought exercise. Why don't we make more staff positions appeals-based? So, we are surprised when enrollment goes up or enrollment goes down, and we make adjustments in September first, October first, things like that. Why don't we start off with a slightly higher staffing ratio in August and plan for, let's say, right now, twenty-six to one in fourth grade, but we start off at twenty-eight to one, we staff the school on day one at twenty-eight to one, and we increase the number of appeals so that we're more effectively able to distribute the teachers into the classrooms where they're needed, as opposed to the classrooms where they get assigned on day one?
Well, actually, part of that answer has already been comprehended in what the board approved last year, excuse me. And that's, it used to be that we base things on the February numbers, which generally went down, and the October numbers are generally higher because you get some attrition by that time. And when we met with the principals, none of this ever used to be really documented. It was a lot of discussion. You set a ratio of twenty-four to one, there was no wobble room. Okay, we had a, this two, this one plus one or two plus one has existed for quite a long time. That's a practice of managing our assets. So on that basis, when we went to the October date, it traditionally has always been because that number is always higher. This past year, because of the three charter schools, it was an anomalous year. Those numbers are usually higher in October. The issue becomes, how do you manage the, the reduction in students if it continues to occur in February? What do you do to manage the budget at that point? So part of the answer is that you have a higher number to go with at the beginning, which means that since we're going to go off that number, our numbers would naturally increase in terms of the number of teachers. We can take any matter of practice to start at a certain ratio and comprehend it, but that's, I think that's what, that what the appeals generally do, Dr. Aguilar.
So, I don't want you to feel like I'm lecturing you.
Oh, no, that's okay.
But, because I do have a point to make here, in that it has bothered me for some time that there is a perception that when we say twenty-four to one, in K to three, that there are twenty-four kids in every classroom in kindergarten three, when in fact, I think probably Galette and, and Green Tea Linden might be the only elementary schools where we have a glut. Maybe Milton as well, I suppose. But the fact is, when you start talking about two plus one and one plus one, what you're really doing is you're, in some cases, depending on the number of sections you have, the reason you have that, Mr. Hidalgo, is that if you have one section of kindergarten and you get to twenty-seven, now you have thirteen in one and fourteen in the other, right? So if you only have one section, you're cutting it by half. If you have two sections, you're cutting it by a third. So the more sections you have, the higher number you need to have before you open a new section, right? It, it makes sense, the higher number you have, and as you lower the ratio, you need to have a smaller number before you open a new section, in combination with the number of sections you have in that grade at that school, which is part of the reason why I asked if we could have a report detailing the distribution of students and teachers in classrooms and sections at each school, so that we can have the data that we need to make this decision. So, the second part of my question is, is it possible, is it even, is it prudent for us to come up with a ratio such as this and decide that's how many teachers we're going to have? Or is it better off, since the, the actual numbers in the classroom differ so greatly in a lot of cases from the numbers on this piece of paper, is it better to come up with some other way to choose how many teachers we're going to have, and then let the principals decide how many students they're going to have in each of their classrooms, as long as they, I believe there's a Bessie bulletin that says, that gives us a maximum number of children that are allowed to have in each classroom?
Well, actually, I, I think we may have the data that you already are asking for. When I sat down with Mr. Hidalgo, and I apologize for making a mistake in terms of one of the masks where we were just having a conversation. We produce by school the number of sections, the number of students, and then there are some varying factors when you get to six to eight and nine to twelve, about gifted programs and alternative, and you have that document, we've sent it to you. That document never used to exist. We, a couple of years ago, we developed it and handed it out to the principals, because they're all smart, well-educated people, and they can understand the stuff that they're reading, and then they can come to us with questions. Matter of fact, one of the ex-principals is in the room, where she came to me one, one, in, in her meeting, Ms. Alicio, and she said, "You lump us all together in six to eight. Those students are segregated by class. You can't just give us a big lump." Well, that made sense. So when we set the ratios up in the, in the six to eight schools, we went class by class, just like you do to K to five, because it made more sense from the point of view of what the principal has to manage. So we actually provide that. When I sat down with Mr. Hidalgo, there's a hundred and thirty-seven students in fifth grade at, in five sections at Galette. And so that's a real-time example of how it works. There are very few classrooms where there's exactly the ratio of students to, to the ratio. Very few. There are some, but it's really probably one in thirty. And if you do have that enrollment, then it would go up. So to address Mr. Hidalgo's concern, and it's a real concern, that Youngsville is being flooded and Rousard being flooded, then you would get another teacher.
I want to, I'm going to recognize Mr. Hidalgo, and discussion is healthy, but let us, let us try to limit our discussion to the motion, and that is to delay implementing this ratio for, until, until we get the report. Mr. Hidalgo?
I'd like to go to Dr. Aguilar just for a minute.
Thank you. The, the issue really is that we're looking at a very, very large financial deficit in next year's budget. So much so that we're trying to really bring some common sense to the number of appeals that are needed, that are really unbudgeted. To move from a two-plus-one scenario to a one-plus-one, which was what we're in this year, would probably add at least twenty additional teachers to the budget. Twenty additional teachers would cost us an additional one point four million dollars in next year's budget, increasing the deficit challenge for the board. Mr. Hidalgo, you're correct that your end of the parish really has the largest class sizes, but you're incorrect in thinking it penalizes them. They are the first schools that get the extra teachers because of the, the number of students that are moving into your schools and classrooms. On other parts of the parish, it's not as reasonable that you would have two-plus-one entering these other schools, so they might not ever get that extra teacher. On the South Side, it happens much more frequently and much more rapidly. This is a sort of time-sensitive item. We should have done this, we should have made this declaration several weeks ago. Principals should already be working with their teachers, deciding how many teachers they need, meeting with Human Resources and making those decisions. I would urge you to allow us to come back to you in a week, next week, provide you with all of the information you need. If you want to change it to one plus one, just be advised, you're going to add to next year's deficit, and it's going to be a million-plus dollars that we have to find somewhere in our budget. Makes no difference to me. This would bring some, some clarity to budgeting and scheduling and staffing, because the idea that we budget for X number of appeals, but then we hire thirty-seven more teachers through the appeal process blows a hole in the budget. So ideally, it would be perfect. We would tell each principal exactly how many teachers to hire, and listen, they make decisions about how many kids in those classes. They follow the formula, but to some extent, principals decide. If they need an extra third grade section, they think it's in the best interest of those kids, they can move a teacher into third grade that's been budgeted for them. So, you know, we can debate this. I think you just need to understand the financial reality of going to one plus one adds about twenty more teacher appeals to next year's budget, beyond what we were anticipating, knowing that we're going to come back to you in the general budget discussion, and the deficit is going to be somewhere between fifteen and twenty-two million dollars. The deficit in next year's budget, we have to close. And if we add back another one point four million, it just makes that task that much larger. So, I'm okay with you guys postponing it. We'd like to bring it back to you Wednesday of next week, so that we can get this pupil/teacher ratio determined.
Well, and that's why my motion wasn't to change it to one plus one, because I understand that it's a, it's a potential issue, and that's why I wanted to postpone it, even though I know it's time-sensitive. Problem is, is we added more teachers this year through this appeals process than we should have, based upon the true numbers. So that was, somewhere down the line, it was a mismanaged process, and I'd like to keep it from happening again. You know, this, in one way or another, increases the pupil/teacher ratio for someone. And my concern is for the whole parish, because yes, there will be places elsewhere that won't get the teacher. If somebody in Ernie Scallett got the teacher, then somebody at, you know, J. Wallace James deserves the teacher. I think that we're going to effectively increase pupil/teacher ratio here. And we did it last year, and I don't want to do it again this year. And I think this is what this does. I understand your argument about the money, but my argument is, we have, we hired more teachers this year, based on that appeals process, than we should have, because we hired, we allowed some of them based on, I think, it looks like we're going to have an increase.
Mr. Hidalgo, I don't think that that happened, as you described it. I came in at the tail end of the appeal process, and Human Resources was not just giving teachers because it was the easy thing to do. It wasn't as simple as that. Here's the reality. If you're in the third grade, you have twenty-four students in your class. If you teach fourth grade, you have twenty-six students. Okay, so the fourth grade teachers already teach twenty-six. If you're a fifth grade teacher, there are twenty-nine students in the class. So the idea that there's a dramatic change in what happens in the classroom by adding two more students, the reality is, it's not going to change the events in that classroom dramatically. Just adding two more students, and when that extra child enters that grade level, that school gets that extra teacher. So if we're talking about four sections of third grade, so we add nine more students, and now we get an extra teacher. Nine more students, so the pupil/teacher ratio drops well below twenty-four to one by adding that extra teacher. Those nine students, if they come from within the parish, the MFP dollars for those nine students is about thirty-six thousand dollars. The cost of that teacher is sixty-seven thousand dollars. We have to be prudent with the dollars. We're not, we're not, we did not take the easy way out and say, "We've got an eighteen million dollar deficit, so we're going to do a plus one in pupil/teacher ratio." That would have been the easy way to really bring down the deficit challenge. Instead, we are holding the pupil/teacher ratio constant. We're actually reducing it in the C and, in the D and F schools, and the one caveat is we're saying, "Okay, it's going to take just a little bit longer to add an extra teacher," and we're doing that not because we want to do it, we're doing that to drive down the number of teacher slots in the appeal line item, to save us that one point four million dollars.
Thank you. I just want to close by saying that I totally agree financially with you. I'm a hundred percent with you. I just have a lot of teachers and a lot of parents that do not agree with another child in the classroom. Because if I change my scenario from third grade to fifth grade, that twenty-nine to one now is thirty-one to one. So, you know, I understand the financial aspect, that's what I'm here for, but-
I understand that. And listen, just to change that number by one student in the class, one, one more or one less, costs this district anywhere from sixty to eighty teachers, depending on whether you do that for special A classrooms. Changing it eighty teachers one way or the other is a five million dollar hit to the budget, good or bad. So if you want to lower the pupil/teacher ratio by one student, plan to hire eighty more teachers, a five million dollar cost.
Mr. Canizic?
Just two comments. I have a concern about the two-plus-one. I had a concern last year about the one-plus-one. I feel like we're using a little bit of smoke and mirrors. I would rather see us just set a limit. If the limit is twenty-seven, then let's just call it twenty-seven. If we have a target of twenty-four, or we have a target of twenty-three, let's call it a target of twenty-three and a limit of twenty-seven. I think we're more upfront if we use direct limits and targets rather than the two-plus-one, what I would call smoke and mirrors. My second concern is that we're very early, we have not necessarily started the budget process, but we're already agreeing on or deciding to our first cut be the classroom, where we're adding students to classrooms. So I think the board would like to hear a little bit more about, and not tonight, obviously, we're not prepared for that, but with the twenty-something million dollars deficit that we have to address, where else can we cut before we cut again in the classroom? Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? We'll go back to the motion, which is to delay receive pupil/teacher ratio until we get a report from the, from the staff. And Dr. Aguilar, I would ask that if you do bring that report next, next meeting, And Dr. Aguilar, I would ask that if you do bring that report next meeting, that along with that report, please make a recommendation.
Absolutely. And listen, I anticipate that the data is available, we just need to put it together, and we'll send it to all board members likely tomorrow.
And like I said, I think I'm holding what you're looking for substantially. I'll make a copy of it, give it to you, and if that's what you're looking for, because we do this exercise, and we've done quite a bit of analysis on what's reasonable. So if you get to a third of a classroom where it's nine or 10 students, then it makes a lot of sense to add a teacher, because that becomes an unreasonable burden in our minds. So it's not like we're flipping about it. I've spent a lot of time going through data and different scenarios. But Mr. Santani, I think I have what you're looking for, and I can get it to you also for our special ed ESL and everything else.
We'd definitely like to have that, you know, every category that has its own ratio, certainly special ed and students of that nature. Anything that has its own special ratio, I'd like that broken out into the data as well, please.
Zone? Did you say zone?
No, no, it's own. I'm sorry.
It's own, okay.
It's own ratio.
If there's no other discussion, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote on this
Nine, four, none against.
All right, motion carries, and we'll move on to item 3.6, which is Vision 2020, and I would recognize Mr. Santani.
Mr. President, I move that the board approves the Vision 2020 plan.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Hidalgo, that the board approve the Vision 2020 plan. Mr. Santani?
A question for Dr. Aguilar. I'll preface this by saying, I think the plan is wonderful. Oh, he...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Any comments from the public before I request comments from the board? Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Santani, ma'am.
Dr. Aguilar, I think the plan is wonderful. I've read it cover to cover, and I think it's exactly why we hired you, for your proven track record of what has worked in your experience in St. Mary Parish, and to implement the same programs here in Lafayette Parish, and bring us up to an A school system. I think it's, the detail is fantastic, and it's something that I wholeheartedly support. I do have one, maybe not so simple question, as the price tag in the back, and following up on our discussion of how the budget deficit will be, anywhere between 15 and 22 million dollars, and this is about a $12 million a year expenditure. Approving this necessarily, I think, says the board puts its weight behind the plan and intends to fund it to the best of its ability, but I think also, there's probably going to come a time over the next year, maybe two, where something, things in the plan will have to be prioritized, based on what is available to implement. And so, do we have a prioritization of implementation? Do we have, in your mind, certainly you've thought about this, the way that you're going to implement it in difficult financial times?
Yes, sir. First of all, please do not focus on that 60 million dollar price tag. We've already begun some of those initiatives to help our students. I mean, you know that. So we're already working aggressively with the resources we have. We are not going to come to you to ask you for an unreasonable amount of money, because we have to live with the budget you adopt. Don't focus on the price tag. We will get there as fast as the money gets us there. So please do not feel compelled to believe that you're committing 60 million dollars. You don't have the 60 million dollars to commit to this. We'll get there, piece by piece, as fast as we can with the dollars and revenues we have.
Any other questions or comments from any members of the board? If not, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Nine, four, none against.
Mr. Santani, I have you also, as requesting to pull item 3.13 concerning budget revision. Capital Projects Fund.
Mr. President, I move that the board approves the budget revision and Capital Projects Fund, with the exception of the new roof on six portable classrooms at Como High School.
Mr. Canizic, second the motion that we approve the budget revision minus six portable classrooms at Como.
Minus the new roof on six portable classrooms at Como.
Minus the new roof on six, well, okay. Any questions or comments from any members of the audience concerning the motion? Any questions or comments from members of the board? Mr. Santani?
I give you my thoughts in that I believe the cutting needs to start now, and that we need to stop spending money on portable buildings, especially putting new roofs on portable buildings that need, the metal roofing is consistently being repaired due to aging leaks. I think we need to probably figure out some other way to use the 80,000 dollars to educate the kids, and if we can continue to spend money on these portable buildings, continue to spend money on the portable buildings. But, you know, we've got to stop at some point. I just, I feel like this point should be now.
Yes, Mr. Hidalgo.
I'd like to ask Mr. Bordelone to come forward, please. And, Mr. Bordelone, what was the reason that the recommendation was to replace the roofs on these portable buildings? And do we own them, or are we renting them?
Good evening, members of the board. Kyle Bordelone, Director of Planning and Facilities. We brought this recommendation to the board because we feel it's the least expensive alternative to keep the water out of this building. We know that we cannot replace these six classrooms at this time. It's going to be quite a while before some portables are available to try to replace them, so in order to try to keep water out of the building, this was our recommendation. We've also looked at, had a contractor go out and look at potentially putting a coating on the roof, but he feels that the rusting is so extensive, he feels that the coating would just be wasted money, that actually replacing the metal panels is the best alternative.
Mr. Canizic?
My comment is that I'm sure that they're near the end of their useful life, and that we plan to do a major rezone of all schools within the next year or two, so that if we can come up with a Band-Aid approach for the next 12 months to 24 months, that might be a better approach.
Ms. Morris?
Are these six classrooms usable at this time?
Yes, they are. They are in use at this time.
And are they in use, are they appropriately usable for instruction of the students during rainstorms and things of that nature?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, we are trying our best to keep the leaks to a minimum, but try as we might, you fix one leak and another one shows up, maybe one or two rainstorms later. So we're doing the best we can. Mr. Hidalgo, I'm sorry, yes, we do own all six of the classrooms, but anyway, that's our recommendation, our Band-Aid approach.
I guess my question is, if there are ongoing leaks moving around on the roof, where do those students go if this does not pass tonight? We don't fix the roof, but then the roof fails. Are there classrooms available at Como to move those students into?
I'm not, I'm not fully aware if there are any empty classrooms at Como High. I would venture to say there probably aren't. I'm not sure if anyone on the instructional side can add to the discussion.
If you're talking about the six with ROTC Spanish and one, two, three, four...
Yes, sir.
If those rooms failed, you have one, two, three full-size, 30-student classrooms, you have three special ed classrooms that hold roughly 15 kids. You might be able to roam a teacher and her class, you might be able to accommodate two, maybe three at the most. I know, no, you couldn't accommodate all six if the roof failed.
Right, so Mr. Craig, you're telling me that there are classrooms in the main building that are empty now, not being used?
No, no, ma'am. What you do is, every teacher has an off period, so you get the master schedule out, and you take these 30 kids, all right, first hour, you go here, second hour, you go to this class, third...
Okay, so it'd be on a rotating basis if that became necessary?
And a school could, a big school like Como can probably accommodate three, four roving teachers at the most. The problem is, that high school now has common planning periods amongst departments, so you don't, you can't rove them amongst the English department, because the English is all off at the same time. So it's a little complicated, but you could probably accommodate two or three teachers.
I want you to know, I appreciate you changing it to planning period. It's really a planning period, not off. I'm going to record, Mr. Broussard, and then Mr. Santani.
Mr. Bordelone, when the new school is built, will we lose those buildings? Can we do without them? Once it's built, can we move those X amount of students, whatever numbers we're moving? Would we be able to do without that building?
I do not have the answer for that right now, Mr. Broussard.
Probably not all of them, Mr. Broussard, because there's 30 classrooms out there in the portables, so a third, you know, the better part of a third of the school is in portables there, but you'd probably get rid of some of them. The problem is, the one he's talking about is pretty well landlocked. I think it would probably be removed with a bulldozer, when it would be moved.
Mr. Santani?
Are we in danger of this building collapsing?
No, sir.
The conversation took a turn there, it made me think with talking of roofs failing, and, you know, if you had to move the students out of the classroom, are we talking about structural failure, or are we talking about leaking?
We're talking about leaking that could persist, get worse. We would have to be consistently changing ceiling tiles.
Why can't we put a tarp on the roof?
That's a really temporary measure.
Seriously, we're rezoning 12 months from now, and Como's going to be reduced the most out of any of the high schools. So like, I'm asking, maybe we can't put a tarp, and if that's the answer, that's fine, but why can't we? For one year, for 80,000 dollars? If we're talking about water, if like a tarp keeps the, we're talking about keeping the water out, right?
Yes, sir.
And we're not talking about keeping the water out for 15 years, we're talking about keeping the water out for 15 months.
Yes, sir.
I mean, is that feasible? I'm not telling you what to do, I'm asking, is it feasible?
Yes, we can put a tarp, and those tarps...
Man, I bet you we could buy two tarps for 80,000 dollars.
Well, yeah, I think we could, and we would have to buy several, because those tarps have a limited life being exposed to the sun. We would have to change it several times, I'm sure, and pending on weather storms, wind storms, they could get ripped off.
You've got some people in Louisiana who are experienced in putting blue tarps on roofs.
I've seen many, yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, and they kept the water out just fine. I mean, it wasn't permanent by any stretch.
Ms. Morrison?
Yeah, I was just concerned about the student learning environment. You know, it could rain and storm at any time, so while we want to save money, we want our students to be comfortable in their environment. We don't want it raining all of a sudden on their materials in the classroom, or losing valuable material that's stored in that classroom. So we have to think about that as well, the student learning environment and the materials inside the classroom. So we don't want to not fix something and have another problem because we didn't fix the problem. So I just want us to think about that. Thank you.
Dr. Chassot?
I know folks were laughing, but I actually agree with you. I was on my mom's roof, and we put a tarp up. I was up there during the hurricane, and it still keeps water out, because we still hadn't been able to fix it yet. It really does work, and it keeps the water out. Question, everyone's looking at the roofing situation. I was looking at the parking lot situation with the limestone parking area transferring $45,000. If I could find somewhere to park those buses in the meantime, because I know everything's going to be fluctuating with the zone changes, would that suffice, and we could save the $45,000, and then subsequently apply that $45,000 to the roofing situation? Because there's a number of, there's a number of businesses that have went out of business, and I actually know two of the owners, and as well, I know at a couple of the Walmarts here in town, that they actually, some bus drivers actually park their buses there, and a simple call to one of the store managers at Walmart, they would be almost more than happy to help the school system out. I mean, if this will save us $45,000 in the meantime, now, if you're looking at a permanent solution, then this isn't it, but temporarily, I mean, two phone calls, one to a district manager and one to the regional manager, and they can park those buses there, I don't know how many buses. It says it's ever-growing. You happen to know how many buses are parking there overnight and on the weekends?
Last time I was there, I think I saw six buses. It has grown from like two last year, early in the year, later in the year, there was four. I was over there about four weeks ago, I think there were six buses.
I just...
And I passed there recently, I say recently, a few months ago, and I believe I counted 12 to 14 buses on a weekend.
Okay. Just wanted to toss that out there. There's a lot of possibilities for that parking situation. If some bus drivers actually park their vehicles at the actual parking lot at the Walmarts, and then subsequently come back, and the store managers don't have a problem with it, so that's always a possibility in a joint venture. Just wanted to mention it.
I have a question.
Mr. Guidry?
One of the challenges is, when we purchased the buses that we were previously leasing over the summer, those 128 buses went back to the leasing company. Now that we've purchased them, we have to have room for those 100, additional 128 buses, so that's, this is one of the things that has led us to consider this. There's an increased need over the summer months, because of the fact that we've now owned the buses and have to have a place to park them.
Okay. Mr. Latchey, let me remind us that the motion here is about a roof on a temporary building. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Mr. Bordelone, thoroughly cool-ceiling, patching the roof for one year. I mean, I don't, I'm not asking you to estimate a cost, but if, well, to cool-seal it for one year, to seal it for one year, I don't think that would cost 80,000, right?
No, sir.
If you were to cool-seal it, what, 5,000?
I don't have a good figure on that, but it would be less than the price estimate.
It should be a lot less. Yeah, I've cool-sealed 10 roofs with a mop and a five-gallon bucket, so I mean, I'll help you with your mother, it's not a problem. Let's get it. If cool-ceiling it for a year, waiting for the new high school to open, I think with the amount of students that'll be moved from Como, and with the rezoning, I think would be a better option. Now, if the roof is going to collapse, or is going to cause problem with the children learning, then spend 80,000, but I think cool-sealing it, or at least getting a quote, to see what it would be to cool-seal it, would maybe be the first choice, my first choice.
Mr. Broussard?
Mr. Craig said, the use of the building is important. If the building, he said the building cannot be moved unless it's torn down. If the building is going to stay there even after rezoning, the new high school is built, then I would, I would say we have to spend the money to do so, but if it's not going to be in use after the new school is built and rezoned, then I would agree to have it, have a... then I would agree to have it, have a Band-Aid put on it. But if, and Mr. Craig and, and Mr. Guidry and yourself think that the building is going to remain there forever and a day, then patching it doesn't make sense, because it just costs us more money later on.
Mr. Kinesik?
I'd like to offer a substitute motion to approve the budget revisions to the capital projects, with the exception of the Prairie Elementary, uh, $45,000 paving project, or I'm sorry, uh, limestone project, and the Como High portable building roof repair of $80,000.
Second.
And Mr. Bruceard seconded the motion. Mr. Kinesi, uh, Mr. Santini? Would you repeat it, please, Mr. Kinesik?
Approve the budget, except for the Prairie Elementary and the Como High School items. Parking lot and roof repair.
Parking lot and the roof. Okay, we have a substitute motion, which we will act on first. Any, are there any discussions or comments from any members of the audience relative to the substitute motion? Members of the board? Eric, I'll, I'll recognize him first since he made the vote.
Mr. Guidry, on the, regarding storing the buses for the summer, I would just offer up these large high school parking lots that I don't think would be active or used extensively in the summer, as a different option than Prairie Elementary.
Mr. Hidalgo?
Yes, Mr. Boarder Law, Dr. Aguilar, Mr. Craig, somebody. Um, I think it's important that we know whether or not the Butler buildings in question are going to stay on campus, once the new high school's built. Because what I don't want to hear in two years is, we need to replace the roof $80,000. Or $95,000, because it'll be two years from now and it's going to cost more. I, I would like to know before we vote, are those Butler buildings staying, or are they going? If they're going, Band-Aid is, Mr. Bruceard said it right. But, uh, we didn't get a response to Mr. Bruceard's concern, and I would like a response.
Mr. Hidalgo, we haven't seen the, the confinal high school zone lines yet. We haven't, we haven't gone through rezoning. It's just impossible to calculate whether or not these six temporary buildings are going to stay or not. I just don't see that happening without knowing the final enrollment count for Como High School.
Ms. Morrison?
Mr. Boarder Law, with your experience with facilities, what would be your suggestion, knowing that we're getting ready to build a new high school? We haven't made our rezoning, uh, decisions yet. What would you do with your experience to, in this situation? Because I know you use several different types of materials, and what is your suggestion?
Uh, Ms. Morrison, um, we, we did discuss, uh, these, uh, different coatings that are available. There's some, there's many different manufacturers that have coatings. Cool Seal is one. Um, but again, based on some input from a contractor, on the condition of the, the metal itself, he did not feel that the, uh, he, he felt that the metal in, in a lot of locations was very, very thin, due to the rusting over the years. You have to remember that some of these buildings are, have probably been in our system for probably upwards of 30 years. Um, just so happens that this roof in particular, uh, has, the weather has taken its toll on it. So, we, we fully understand that there's an unknown of whether that building was, those buildings will stay there or not. Um, the fact of the matter is, we own those buildings. So even if they don't stay at, at Como High, there's a good chance we would be able, be able to relocate them to another school site, where we could get rid of some leased buildings that we're currently leasing, and replace them with some of these buildings. So if it has a, if it has a good roof on it, we would have no problems relocating it somewhere else. If it doesn't have a good roof, and we do have to pull it off, uh, off of Como's site, there's a good chance we would just try to auction it off, basically. Uh, because, um, the condition of, of repairs at that time may just not be, may not warrant moving it to another site. So, um, that's why we were recommending to put a new skin, if you want to call it, on the roof, so that later down the road, if we do relocate it, it, it would be ready to go.
Any more questions or comments, discussion? If not, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote on the substitute motion.
I did. Oops. Six, four, three against.
Motion carries, the original motion therefore dies, so that, uh, we'll move on. Item 315, wait, item 315, general fund budget revision academic auditor? 315, general fund budget revision academic auditor. I think Mr. Hidalgo asked to pull that one.
Wait till they get their stuff worked down there.
Refresh. I don't have a 3.16. That? Oh, okay. But it's still the one that you pulled, Mr. Hidalgo. It was 315 on the, on the, on the original.
Well, that changes everything.
Agenda.
No problem. Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Right, we're acting on 3, 316 instead of 315. Because it, under the revised version, it's 316. When it was pulled, it was 315.
They certainly can't write a motion right now, so I'll just wait till they're done.
The what? They didn't show it, they didn't show it on the screen. It's, it passed six to three.
Okay, but, okay, Melva? We're acting on 3.16.
I know, I know that. It's okay. I have it at 16, I refreshed. Okay.
All right, Mr. Hidalgo, I think you're ready.
Thank you, thank you. I have several questions. I, I, I'm going to make a motion that the board not approve the general fund budget revision, uh, to fund the position of academic auditor.
All right, we have a motion on the floor that we not fund this academic auditor's position. Can I, can I get a second?
I will second.
Okay, Mr. Kinesi, Kinesi seconds the motion. Mr. Hidalgo?
Okay, I have several questions. I, I guess the, I don't even know where to start. I guess the first question I'll ask is, this academic auditor, how long is the position? Uh, I don't know if I need to ask Dr. Aguilar or Mr. Laundre. How long has the position been vacant?
It, it hasn't been vacant, it's a new position.
Okay, and it was created?
It was created as an agenda item for your consideration tonight.
Right, right, okay, so, let me ask you, um, what, what department is this related to?
This is related to, um, work, work needed with our emerging schools. Specifically, uh, we hired, two months ago, we hired Irma Trossclaire as our school improvement administrator. We specifically charged her with helping our emerging elementary schools. Uh, Irma and I have been talking daily about the needs and the challenges and the opportunities to help those three schools in particular. One of the things that Ms. Trossclaire needs is she needs somebody to be in those schools and to help with professional development, to strengthen and reinforce those teacher abilities. She can't, she's come to me for several weeks now, asking for help. This is, this is a difficult time of the year, to be adding a person. But the challenges are enormous to try to help those emerging elementary schools in particular, uh, increase their academic achievement. We're trying desperately to eliminate the idea that we have any D or F schools in Lafayette Parish. Uh, I have been, um, judiciously not filling vacant positions for the past several months. Uh, I know of at least eight positions that are either vacant today, or will be vacant shortly, that quite frankly, I'm holding because of the budget discussion. So I'm coming to you, uh, asking for this help, so that we can help these emerging schools. The end result is, it's, would be a new hire, but it's not a new addition to the central office. It's just a filling of what will be a vacant position. By my calculations, we're looking at at least a savings of, of a half million dollars to the general fund budget, if these six to eight positions are not filled in next year's budget. So, by the way, this funding is coming out of the fund balance. So to be clear, um, it will need a two-thirds majority vote to approve this, um, recommendation.
Mr. President, if I could just, uh, thank you. That's what I wanted to know. I, I was going to ask you if, if, you know, why couldn't we move money instead of funding a, a new position? Because we just didn't fix a leaky roof for $80,000. We also are considering, um, the pupil teacher ratio scenario, which by the way, uh, if you take the 5 million, uh, number you mentioned, and you divide that out by the 80 teachers, that's 62,500. So this position funds you over one and a half teachers. So that's my concern, is we're not, you know, we're, we're, we're going the opposite direction in the classroom, that, directly in the classroom. And then we're not fixing a leaky roof where we have 30 children, when there only supposed to be 28 in the classroom, and so.
Yes, sir, and listen, we have to be prudent about what we're trying to do. Um, I did not pay Mr. Santini to say those nice things about my track record. He, he volunteered all of that just from his knowledge of what happened in St. Mary Parish. I would not be coming to you with this kind of request if I did not feel it was necessary. You see, we have to not be afraid to spend a little bit of money to help our schools improve. If we do not spend that money to help our schools improve, then what are we doing here? What is this all about? If we're allowing no school to really change their academic performance? We could just keep the labels we have today. We're trying to stop children choosing to go to charter schools. That's what we're doing. We're trying to keep more kids in our classrooms, so that we have more MFP dollars. And so, uh, Mr. Hidalgo, I appreciate any consideration you have for this item. I think it's vitally important to the schools.
What, Ms. Morris, I don't, and then Eric?
Um, well, Dr. Aguilar addressed, um, one of the comments about the empty positions that are not being filled, um, including most recently, the assistant sped director. Um, and I guess my next comment's not a question so much as maybe, I see that Ms. Trossclaire is here, and so perhaps it would be helpful if she could come up and explain how this position would help her with those things that we've tasked her with.
Mr. President, if I could, before she gets up.
Sure.
Then, I wanted to clarify a second in the motion, because I wanted to have the motion discussed, not because I'm up for or against. I actually, uh, am supportive of adding an assistant to Ms. Trossclaire, if that's, if someone to assist, um, Ms. Trossclaire. My concern is, when I look at the job description, if this is necessarily the right job description? Academic auditor? And also, uh, with our discussions earlier in the meeting, this is not the correct format for a current job description. It is not up to date. Um, I know you don't want to wait, but I think the board, maybe in the future, if you're going to ask us to approve, um, something like this, you, you go ahead and go through the motions of, of changing and updating the job description to be updated.
Yes, sir, you caught that little note, uh, issue that it's an old job description. Uh, Ms. Boudreaux called me today and said, this doesn't fit our criteria. And listen, I am urgent. Uh, this is a serious matter. And I apologize to you that it has all of the right components. It just isn't a refreshed job description.
Right, and we've had plenty of discussions where we have people come up and say, well, that's not really what I do. So, I'm okay with approving the position. I'm okay approving it with the job description as is. And I would just ask that, and now we know, we should expect a modified job description coming.
Yes, sir.
Shortly, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Trossclaire? Oh, wait a minute, okay.
Um, I do not want to stop her from speaking, I want to hear what she has to say. But in light of what the superintendent shared, I do want to pull my motion. And so maybe there'll be another motion on the floor, and then certainly give her the opportunity.
I'll recognize Mr. Kinesik.
I move to approve the general fund budget revision for the academic auditor.
Ms. Morris, Ms. Morris seconded the motion. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Trossclaire, go ahead. Push the button.
Thank you. Good evening. I have, um, been on campuses since my appointment December 13th. I have visited all three emerging schools daily, um, numerous times. And I see great potential in all three of those schools. There's no reason that those schools cannot grow as long as we are giving the, the teachers, the administrative staff, as well as the students, what they need. Um, I'm new to this district, so certainly I'm not pointing any fingers at anyone. I wouldn't know who to point fingers, um, at, but I will tell you this. Children at those three schools have been failed in many, many ways. Um, their needs are great, geez, great. All of those schools have rock star teachers on those campuses.
Nine, four, none against.
Motion carries. This concludes the items on our agenda. I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned.